We're hearing. Thank you. Good evening. This Town of Adams Board of Selectment meeting on Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020 is now in session. I will state that we are operating remotely and as such, I would just need to remind all of you that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. We are using the Zoom platform and in addition to using the Zoom platform, that is also the way that we are recording this meeting. No in-person attendance of members of the public has been permitted. Anyone who is in this room has been approved to be in the room to make sure that we are in compliance with our restriction orders. Every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. We thank Northern Berkshire Community Television for providing a live stream to homes. So we thank you for that. And I will do my best to make sure that I keep track of the participants who are virtually joining us this evening. I will just note that we do have a member, Jim Bush, joining us remotely. In the room is myself, Chair Christine Hoits, Member John Duval, Member Rick Blanchard, and Member Joe Novak. Also, we have here our county administrator, Jay Green, with us, a member of Northern Berkshire Community Television, member of I-Berkshire, and our town clerk. We will have some other guests who are joining us. On the Zoom call, everyone in the room can see you as we have the screen projected on the wall, so I don't need to read off all of your names. And I think that that might be all of the things that I need to say regarding logistics at this point. So with that, I will go ahead and ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the revolver for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes. In front of us, we have the August 5th and August 11th minutes of the Board of Selectmen. It is my understanding that all members can approve these minutes. What is the fourth pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we waive a reading of the minutes and approve them as provided for August 5th, 2020, and August 11th, 2020.
I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Member Duval. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Roll call. Roll call. Thank you very much, Joe. Appreciate that. It is a roll call vote because we are remote. So Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. The minutes are unanimously approved. I got distracted as I was trying to let somebody else into the virtual room for the call. That brings us to public comments on the agenda. Before I open it up to the public and give people a little bit more time to settle in in the virtual room, I did want to just publicly thank the Susan B. Anthony Birthplace Museum. They have generously provided on loan a portrait of Susan B. Anthony that now is in the Selectmen's meeting room straight ahead for all of us here, and I'll try to show everyone at home. This portrait has been at the Birthplace Museum since it was donated by Bounty Fair Restaurant, and it is actually part of their permanent collection, so providing it on loan for six months. It's been very generous of them, and it will be on display here till the end of February of 2021. So I just wanted to thank them for providing that to us. I do see that Chief Bacon is waiting in the wings and had asked to speak during public comments. He has with him a few guests. I do ask that everyone in the room please put their masks on because we will be over capacity at this time while he introduces a few people that we have heard about and we've read about as we had handled the ratifications, I think, last meeting. So, oh, wow. Wow. Okay, you brought a few more guests than I expected. So go ahead, Chief.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Today, we have two of our newest officers. Excited and proud to have both of them here. The first one here, I'd like to introduce to you Officer Nicholas Kaiser. Prior to coming to the Adams Police Department, he served as a full-time officer with the North Adams PD. He brings with him an extensive training background and a community police and philosophy that will significantly benefit the Town of Adams. So I formally introduce you to Nick Kaiser.
Nick? I feel like I'm being clapping. This is that awkward moment where we would normally shake our hands, so applause seemed a little bit more appropriate.
Yep, you're up. I can do a note of office.
Hi, Nicholas Kaiser.
Hi, Nicholas Kaiser.
You sound clear. So, in my office, we have the M23, the fourth amendment, which is currently impartially or without theater ability. Don't knock me out before you do. I talk.
You're up. You're the man. You're the man, right?
Thank you for helping us. We're glad.
Yeah, okay. Cool. Thank you. Yep. Did you want to have any questions for a minute? Would you like to say anything? Oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Officer Kaiser. Okay.
We're getting our, we're getting number two.
Sure. Chief, if you could move that speaker that's next to Joe?
Yep.
Oh, I think Jay's going to handle that.
Yes.
Just bring it a little closer so that the people on the call can actually hear. Should I put that table on that board? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce Officer Samantha Lawrence. Samantha has an extensive training background, sorry, and has experience working with the United States Army, Department of Homeland Security, Massachusetts State Police. Samantha understands the importance of strong community cohesion and engagement. We are excited to have Samantha here, and congratulations. And you will be welcome here for the call.
Oh, sorry. We didn't look out from the bar on that set.
What'd they say?
What happened to all those bottles?
Not fully clear that I will withhold the duty for my office. I will withhold the duty for my office as a government police officer. I will withhold the hand for the town of Adams. For the town that basically, impartially, impartially, without theater ability, for the way we're looking for my guys, I'll be down to you by the way.
Thank you. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
You did? Is this the family?
Yes. Bring the family.
Hello. Welcome.
I hope so. I think they're, they're, they're good. They're gonna stay right there. But, no, thank you for the, to the officers who came out to support our new hires. It meant a lot to me to have the officers out when I took my oath of office. And I know the feeling that I had, and I'm sure that both Samantha and Nick have that feeling right now. Appreciate and thank the sweatboard for approving and ratifying the hires. I feel really good about the, these two officers, and we're looking forward to getting them trained up and getting them on the street to serve the people of Adams. But thank you. Good to get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Okay. So at this time, I will open it up for anything else under public comment. For those of you who are still at your seats, if you would like to, you can remove your mask because we are under our gathering restrictions. Is there anybody else, anybody on this call who wishes to speak to the Board of Selectmen under public comment? Okay. Hearing none, just a, and logistical item, the person who has signed in as Linda, if you could type in the chat function your first and last name so we can record it for the minutes, that would be appreciated. Okay. So that brings us on to, sorry, new business. And under new business is the approval of the town meeting warrant. The Board of Selectmen was provided with a draft of the town meeting warrant prior to this evening's meeting. The Board will recognize Articles 1 through 19 as routine financial articles, and then we have Articles 20 through 27, which are a variety of articles. As we have done in the past, I will go through and read the heading on the articles and ask if anybody on the Board would like to hold that article. And if they do, then we will take that up with a different item. And at the end, the articles that have not been held, we will go ahead and dig a motion and a vote on. Does that sound appropriate? If it says otherwise, so we'll move forward. Okay. And I will just ask, since I will be reading, if somebody does enter the virtual room and somebody in the Board notices it, Rick, you're usually really good at this, if you could let me know, and I will try to make sure that they're there, or if somebody typed in something or raises their hand.
That means the pressure's on.
Pressure's on. On that side of the, so you can see. Okay. So the annual articles, Article 1, to choose all other town officers not previously chosen by ballot. And Jim, make sure you speak up if you want to hold an article, okay?
Okay.
Okay, and I'm going to try to have Rick look for you to see if you are motioning to hold that article. Appreciate it. Article 2, to hear the reports of the Board of Selectmen and other town officers and act thereof. Article 3, to hear the reports of any committee and act thereof. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town in accordance with the provisions of Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws as amended, and to see if any of said salaries and compensation shall be increased or take any other action in relation thereto. Under this article, you'll see the stipends for the Board of Selectmen, Board of Assessors, Treasurer slash Collector, Town Clerk, Board of Health, Cemetery Commissioners, and the Moderator. Okay. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum or sums of money as may be necessary to defray the ordinary expenses of the town for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, or take any other action in relation thereto. It listed there are the personnel services and operating expenses for the various departments. Okay. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum or sums of money as may be necessary for the purchase, rebuilding, and/or installation of certain departmental equipment for the contracting for certain services to pay interest and loans maturing during this period, for the repair, reconstruction, and/or construction of streets, roadways, sidewalks, sewers, guardrails, retaining walls, buildings, and/or bridges within the town, further to authorize the trade-in of any presently owned equipment toward the purchase price thereof, or take any other action in relation thereto. That brings us to Article 7, capital infrastructure and equipment outlay from free cash, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from, appropriate from available funds, free cash, a sum or sums of money as may be necessary for the purchase, rebuilding, and/or installation of certain departmental equipment, for the contracting for certain services, building within the town, further to authorize the trade-in of any presently owned equipment toward the purchase price thereof, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Madam Chair, I'll hold.
Okay. So that's holding Article 7. Okay. Article 8. Articles 8 and 9 are the regional school assessment articles. So Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum or sums of money as may be necessary for the operating and capital assessments of the Housick Valley Regional School District for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Madam Chair, please hold.
Okay. Member Duval has held Article 8. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum or sums of money as may be necessary for the operating and capital assessment of the Northern Berkshire Vocational Regional School District for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, or take any other action in relation thereto. Okay. The next set of Articles 10 through 13 are transfers to special funds. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds a sum of money to be used to lower the tax rate or take any other action in relation thereto. It is proposed that $250,000 of free cash be utilized to offset this year's tax rate. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money to be added to the stabilization fund or take any other action in relation thereto. This article will transfer the balance of the reserve fund, currently $165,000, to the stabilization fund. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum of money to provide for extraordinary and/or unforeseen expenditures to be known as the reserve fund account, transferred from which may be made from time to time only by the Finance Committee, or take any other action in relation thereto. Oh, this is an annual item that allows the town the flexibility to meet operational difficulties through the Finance Committee and will eliminate the expense of calling a special town meeting. The request is $175,000.
Would you like to hold that one, please?
Okay. Joe will hold Article 12. Close that. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum of money to pay unpaid bills of current or prior fiscal years, or take any other action in relation thereto. At this time, there are no outstanding bills. The next set of Articles are annual authorization articles. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to authorize its Board of Selectmen to apply for and receive funds from the Community Development Block Grant Program under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, or take any other action in relation thereto. This article will allow the town to apply for and expend Community Development Block Grants. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to authorize its Board of Selectmen to apply for and receive funds from the United States Department of Agriculture under the Community Facilities Grant Program, or take any other action in relation thereto. This article will allow the town to apply for and expend Community Facilities Grants. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to accept certain perpetual care funds that were received during the period January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, for the care and maintenance of cemetery lots. Such funds are in the custody of the town treasurer, or take any other action in relation thereto. This article will allow the town to accept the $3,100 deposited within, with the town for the care and maintenance of cemetery lots. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow in the event of a revenue shortfall, to allow the treasurer to borrow via revenue anticipation notes, tax anticipation notes, federal aid anticipation notes, grant anticipation notes, and state aid anticipation notes, in an amount not to exceed the anticipated revenue shortfall, or take any action in relation thereto. The law requires that the town annually grant this authority to the town treasurer. Next set of Articles. Are they bylaw? Hold on. Yeah, I believe so. A bylaw amendment. No, no, it's not.
You have the...
Article 18.
Article 18, authorized revolving funds.
Thank you. Article 18, authorized revolving fund spending limits, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, to establish limitations on expenditures from the revolving funds established by Chapter 50 of the General Bylaws entitled revolving funds as follows, or take any action in relation thereto.
Madam Chair, please hold. The community has more available.
Okay. Article 19, amend compensation plan, to see if the town will vote to amend the compensation plan as established by Section 10-5 of the Town of Adams Code of Laws, or take any other action in relation thereto. And you'll see that the salary administration plans and annual rate tables are included. Article 20, this is to, this is the Smart Growth Overlay District, also known as 40R. This is to create a new section. The town will vote to amend Chapter 125 zoning of the Code of the Town of Adams by creating a new section entitled Smart Growth Overlay District, to read as follows, or take any other action in relation thereto. The entire bylaw, Smart Growth Overlay District bylaw, is included in the warrant. It is on the town's website, as it has been part of several public meetings. In the notes section, it does state that the 40R program directs future multifamily housing development in locations identified by the town. The recommended 40R bylaw would apply to those locations frequently recommended for reuse and redevelopment as housing, examples Memorial School Jones Block and Armory Block, Housick Street Mills, et cetera. Establishing the 40R program in Adams will provide the town with greater scrutiny and more control to ensure future housing projects are complementary to their location. Adoption of the 40R program is also expected to enhance the attractiveness of town properties for redevelopment because it provides developers more direct access to capital and additional financing resources for these types of projects. The proposed Smart Growth Overlay District is the result of public information meetings and several public meetings and hearings by the Adams Planning Board. The Board adopted the Smart Growth bylaw on December 23, 2019, following which it was reviewed for consistency with the 40R program by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. The minor changes identified by DHDD staff were submitted to the Planning Board for additional review, and on May 28, 2020, the Adams Planning Board recommended approval of the Smart Growth Overlay District. With the adoption of the 40R program, the town will receive an initial incentive payment from the Commonwealth up to $600,000. Initial payment is expected to be $250,000 plus, and an additional incentive payment for every lot created under the program.
Madam Chair, please hold.
Sure. Member Duval has held Article 20. Article 21, amend the zoning map of the Town of Adams, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map of the Town of Adams as most recently amended, to rezone certain land as follows, or take any other action in relation thereto. The existing zoning map of the Town of Adams was developed almost 50 years ago. It is becoming increasingly apparent that the town's existing zoning boundaries create barriers to both property owners and potential investors. This is especially true for the town's commercial zoning. Efforts to establish more reasonable zoning district boundaries have been focused on the southern half of town, from Housick Street to the Cheshire Line, primarily along both sides of Route 8 and also along a section of Summer Street. The general goals of the proposed zoning map changes are, one, eliminate split lot zoning in which one portion of a lot is zoned business, typically B-2, and the rear portion is zoned residential, typically R-4. Often, this makes it hard for businesses to fully use their property, and in many cases, it is impossible to know exactly where the zoning lines fall. Proposed is to change the zoning boundaries to match lot lines unless there's some physical reason to split a parcel. Two, eliminate or reduce the number of non-conforming properties that have historically been used as commercials but are zoned residential. Proposed is to rezone these properties to remove the non-conformity. Three, modify zoning district boundaries where needed to provide a more consistent and rational zoning boundaries using topography and other physical features, river, roads, as the zoning boundary line. So that's Article 21.
Sure, then, more.
Article 22, Quaker Meeting House, to see if the Town of Adams will vote to appropriate $6,500 from the Quaker Meeting House Trust Fund for the purpose of obtaining repair quotes and/or performing. Article 23, Housick Valley Regional School District, to see if the Town of Adams will vote to appropriate $35,677 from free cash to fund two-thirds of an appropriation deficit to the Housick Valley Regional School District, or take any other action relative thereto. And this calculation was made between amounts owed by the Town of Adams in Cheshire for two fiscal years, and this will be payment one of two to repay the Town of Adams share. Article 24, Economic Development Fund, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Economic Development Fund a sum of money to be used for economic development expenses, including $4,611 for the senior planner, $45,000 for an economics slash community development consultant, and $10,000 for marketing, downtown infrastructure, engineering, or other studies related to economic development, or take any other action in relation thereto. The town is asking for $59,611 to be spent with the approval of the Town Administrator for fiscal 2021. The available balance of the Economic Development Fund is $86,869.
I'll hold that one, please, 24.
Yep. Member Novak is holding Article 24. Article 25, accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 33, Section 53. Accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 33, Section 59. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 33, Section 59, entitled Effective Military Service on Salaries, Seniorities, and Leave Allowances of Public Employees. Currently, the town allows up to 17 days of leave with pay to an employee who is a member of a reserve component of the Armed Forces of the United States. This provision will grant them up to 40 days. Article 26. Land Acquisition. To see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectments to purchase, acquire, or take through eminent domain a parcel of land next to the Flunkett Elementary School, containing approximately .22 acres of land and improvements thereto, and known as 26 Commercial Streets, identified by the Town of Adams Assessor's Records as Map 115, Parcel 76, and more particularly described by, in the Northern Bureau Registry of Deeds in Book 1,644, page 1,096, in exchange for forgiveness and removal of lease imposed by the Town of Adams on property located at 50 Commercial Streets, identified by the Town of Adams Assessor's Records as Map 119, Parcel 225, and more particularly described by, in the Northern Bureau Registry of Deeds in Book 1,45644, page 743. Said negotiations resulting in no cost to the town other than the presumed loss of back taxes, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Chair, please hold.
Member Duval has held Article 6. Point six, right? Okay. I didn't say that correctly, right? Lot of numbers with the reading, so my apologies. And that brings us to Article 27, which is a citizen's petition. The citizen's petition is to see if the Town of Adams will vote to accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Sections 5 and, also known as the Veteran Tax Work Off Program, which permits a veteran, as defined by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 4, Section 7, Clause 43, who owns property in and pays real estate taxes to the Town of Adams to receive a maximum credit of $990 against the veteran's real estate tax bill for the fiscal year following the year in which the credit is earned, or to take any other action in relation thereto. And the contents of that petition are in your packet. Brings us to Article 28. To transact any other business that may legally come before said meeting. Okay. Just to recap, it looks like we have held for discussion Articles 7, 8, 12, 18, 20, 24, and 26. Does that seem correct? Okay. So if the board wishes, we could take a motion to approve... I see, Article that were not held. Articles 1 through 6, 9 through 11, 13 through 17, 19, 21 through 23, Articles 25, and Articles 27 through 28.
I'm going to make a motion that the board approves the Articles not held.
So I have a motion by Member Blanchard and a second by Member Duval. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Joe.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so those articles have been unanimously approved. I want to just point out that Superintendent Brogdon is on the call, as he was on the call in case Article 9 had been held. Jim, we're happy to have you continue on the call, but if you wanted to sign off, we would not be offended. We'd understand.
Okay, I understand very much. Thanks, Christine. I'll stick around a little bit longer.
I appreciate that. Thank you very...
Thank you.
I also want...
Appreciate your support.
Absolutely. And I also wanted to point out that the individual on the screen listed as Linda is John Bianchi. John is the one who authored the citizen petition, which is Article 27, and he called in in case there were any questions that came up with that article. John, as there were no questions, it would not held. Again, you are free to stay on the call. We'd love to have you stay with us, but also we would understand if you did not.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, and so we'll see you at town meeting.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. That will bring us to Article 7, which was held by Member Duval. Oh, no, that one you do have a specific question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just referenced in the board's end update, 7, under Public Works. Under the heading of Road Maintenance, it states this request is for replacement of sewer pipes during Route 8 project. Questions we may receive are, the project is over 7 million, and it was approved by the Metropolitan Planning Organization. The funding has been secured. It's all been planned, going to start soon, and the signs are going up. Why the extra $217,000 for the sewer pipes, which is the location where the project is going to be constructed? Same location. That's my question. Why the extra $217,000?
That's for me, John.
Yes, flying through the chair, of course.
Sure, sorry. So as you said, that's an expensive project funded through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which accesses federal and state dollars in order to fund that work. Certain portions of work are covered, even though federal and state costs other portions are not. Unfortunately, the work to repair the sanitary sewer line, which is the town's responsibility, town infrastructure work, is not covered by those grant cards. Therefore, that is called non-participating work, in that COT Highway Contract Language, and the municipality has to fund that work. So that's why that money is in the discretionary capital. It's frankly the largest amount. However, there is an alternative way to fund it, and that could be through the incentive payment the town would aspirationally receive from the state, should it accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40R. We would receive, if that weren't, if that article passes town meeting, we would receive X amount of dollars. Don should have to give you the specific calculation, but we would anticipate it would be a six-figure amount. They had to be used for infrastructure purposes. We believe that would qualify. So we would be able to utilize that payment money in order to cover that work. However, that hasn't happened yet, so we have to come up with a way to at least fund that potential work, and that's why you have it in your discretionary capitol.
So if the, if 40R is approved and the funding is received, then the board makes that decision?
I would say the board could make a decision as to how they wish to spend that money, and if they wish to not spend it, to leave it, or to make the decision to leave it with the capital, spend that, and we would use it for other projects, if the board would see fit. Or alternatively, this money would stay with the capital, not be used, and would return it back into free cash at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about Article 7? Hearing none? I'll entertain a motion to accept Article 7.
Motion to accept Article 7.
Okay. The second by Member Blanchard. Any further discussion? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote, Joe.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so Article 7 is approved. Member Duval, you held Article 8.
I did, Madam Chair. Just got a few questions for, well, since Superintendent Brogdon is still on. It's really a question that attended the both districts. Just some questions in regards to the situation that we're in with the pandemic. There's going to be a hybrid beginning, I believe. At least I've read that for Adams-Cheshire. So the question is, what about busing? I know the, I'm sure both districts have contracts with busing contractors, and if, you know, the school year is shortened, based off of the 100-day-a-day, a little more required by the state, but for busing, another thing is, you know, if the cafeteria isn't open, the school cafeteria workers. What's the situation there? Is there savings there, or is it just the contract's a contract, and the cafeterias will be open at the beginning of school year? So the question is, is there any savings in those areas or any similar areas that because of the way the school year is beginning and the way it's going to go, no one really knows the final answer? But will there be any, is there any savings in those areas?
So Superintendent Christine, do you want to take that first?
Sure. I guess the answer is potentially. You know, with all the unknowns that we're dealing with. Right now, you know, we're obviously not starting busing on September 2nd, which we would have started at school today, so we're not going to be busing for the next 10 days. But when we do start, we're busing in pre-K, we're busing kindergarten, we're busing special education. Because we had to account for numbers, our kindergarten busing is going to be doubled because we split the sessions into an AM and PM session, you know, for everybody's safety. I mean, luckily, we have a lot of numbers, but in a situation like this, it's also a curse in terms of, you know, now we need to bus them, and we, you know, we need to keep our cohorts small. As we get into the year, the busing is going to increase. Athletics, you know, doesn't look like it's going to happen for the fall. You know, so there's potential savings there. But it's kind of one of those cases, we have to get through a month or two and have discussions with the bus company about how we can renegotiate the pieces. I'd say that's similar to what we did in the spring when things came up. You know, we didn't know how long things were going to go or what was going to change in terms of our needs. So we kind of waited that out, and then we negotiated an agreement, you know, to reflect the savings, you know, that would go along with the services that we didn't utilize. You know, as far as the cafeteria, even though the kids aren't there, we're still serving every day. We're serving breakfast and lunch to students every day, so the cafeteria workers are still going in and doing that work. The difference being, for the students that aren't there, they're going to be picking them up. For the students that are there, obviously, we'll be feeding them in the classrooms and other spaces, so. And that program runs on its own account, own revolving account, and it's largely subsidized by the government. So we get paid for meals that we deliver and don't get paid for meals that we don't deliver. So being that's a separate entity, it doesn't necessarily reflect in our overall budget.
Yeah, and if I can address that too, I'll echo and agree with Aaron and his point. Couple of, the slight difference with McCann is that we are going to open for students on the 16th, so our bus routes will be running, similar to what we did last year. We'll sit with the bus company and say, we had a contract for 180 session days, now it's 170 session days. You recall last year that we had 115 session days and 65 non-session days, so we were able to negotiate reductions. That resulted in monies coming back to the town. I think around 49 or 50K or something like that, which certainly we would look at. But in this particular case, the bus routes are limited by the guidance that we received from DESI, so that when my route is running and I have a 47-passenger bus, I probably have 15 students. So we've had to adjust our numbers of students in the building to fit the transportation and the ability to have them into the school. The other is the cafeteria will run. And similar to what Aaron said, we have, you know, meals to prepare under the free and reduced meal programs of students. So the caf staff is going to be in, actually, as of the 16th, we'll have some 135 to 140 students a day, or slightly larger than that in the building.
Okay, thank you both. Just one more question, really two questions in one. In regards to internet access, do all your students that will require it have internet access? And also, do they have, I know for the elementary school, probably more, the Chromebooks? I know the town helped one year in purchasing some of those, but do they all have the equipment they need to be able to call in and be able to take their classes virtually?
Yeah, so fortunately, you know, through all of this, I guess the one positive is that there have been grants for us to attain equipment. So we purchased hotspots that we're going to distribute to families that don't have internet access. So we're going to be using Verizon Jetpacks. Looks like we're going to have a ballpark of 70 of those distributed to families that need the internet access to get online. And in terms of the Chromebooks, with some purchases this spring, we're in the ballpark of 800, which leaves us 300 short for families. Part of our surveying that we did for the fall session is how many families can bring their own devices to learning? So families that have a laptop, might be a MacBook, might be a Chromebook, might be a Windows machine. As long as you have a device that has an internet browser, you can basically do everything you need to do because everything we run, we run on the cloud. So we've had about 500 families that have said that they can do that. So we've had a registration for families that need the devices to get them. So next week, we'll be distributing both Jetpacks and Chromebooks to families, and we should have sufficient devices to start. The state had a program where we could get devices sooner because as you can imagine, everybody's buying Chromebooks and laptops right now. So we put an order in through the state for 400 more devices that will get us beyond the one-to-one and kind of help us as we're building a replacement plan for all those devices. Because another piece that happened to us is, the town helped with devices six years ago. After six years, the support does not, there's no longer support for Chromebooks. And there wasn't necessarily a replacement plan before I got here. So now, part of what we're doing is getting devices, but also building a replacement plan to make sure that we have enough and we continue with up-to-date devices.
And once again, I'll echo Aaron. We have the same piece. We have devices here that we can issue to families, so we know who and they've identified themselves, as we did last March. Issued out laptops. Everybody has Chromebooks in the play. Within expected October, and that's a one-for-one distribution to all students and staff in the building. But right now, we have sufficient devices and are not aware of those that we have not worked out other arrangements with that need internet access. Recalling that we've got nine communities and some of us, and also students that are coming in from out of district. It might be in Washington or Windsor or someplace else. So we're working with those families as well to make sure they have access.
Okay, I want to thank you both for, I know, difficult times and your staff has prepared for this year, and it seems like things are in our control as of today.
Yep, you got it. Hasn't today. Thank you.
Great, thank you all very much.
Member Novak has a question.
Yeah, I, since you're on, I just had a few quick questions. The opt-out option, have you established numbers of children or students that their family are going to opt them out of not attending school and going virtual?
So I would start by saying that they're not opting out of school. They're choosing a remote option, which we have to follow. So I want to make sure people are clear on that. You know, and it looks like about a third of our population is opting for the remote-only cohort. You know, which has made it extremely difficult, quite honestly, because not only do we have a remote-only cohort, we have two-thirds of our students remaining that are going to be in person. We can't bus them all to school at the same time. We can't, we can't, you know, instruct them all in the same time if they're not in the building. So we had to do the hybrid model to make sure that we were able to provide access to everybody, which means we also have another remote cohort for the students that are not in the building. So there's a lot of logistics we're working out with the scheduling of the cohorts and all of those pieces, so. It's created quite a complex situation, but as I said, about a third of our families have chosen the remote-only option. It's created quite a complex situation, but as I said, about a third of our families have chosen the remote-only option.
Okay, Aaron, and then Jim, you can answer.
Sure. We don't have an awful lot of students, families that have opted completely for the remote because our in-school sessions are vocational only. One of the big critical pieces that we missed last March and we have up until this date is the hands-on portion of the learning and in the shop classes, in carpentry and metal fabrication and business technology is missing. So, when we bring our students in, it's in those vocational areas. They're academic, we're starting out the year remote. So, it took a little bit of pressure off because a student on one shop week will be in three days. Skip another week for academic, come back, two weeks later, be in for two days. So, that means five vocational days over a 10-day period. So, the amount of families that requested that portion be remote was very, very few. And we're still in contact with them as well to find out rationales and reason. But their academic is going to be, every other week is going to be remote anyway.
Okay, and a follow-up on that. If they decide to opt out, they can't say, "Well, in three weeks, I want to come to school." Is that true or do they have to wait for each marking term before they're able to enter back into the classroom?
We've asked families to commit for a marking term because that's a natural transition time. You can't have this in-and-out situation. It's tough enough to really get these cohorts and everything assembled. You know, when two students coming into a classroom could totally blow up the model where you have to open up additional spaces, which also might require additional staffing. So, really having that time to plan it out, you know, we've asked them to commit to the quarter.
Yep, and we've done the same thing, and for Aaron, great, great reason. We just can't, don't have flexibility. This is a different time and different circumstances. You know, if this will last year or the year before and somebody comes and goes, you can always make an adjustment. You cannot now because of social distancing, safety, head count, everything else. So, no, you've got to stick it out for a marking period.
Okay, and my last question is, we all know that parents cherish their children and, you know, during this type of unknown time in the pandemic, have you had any students opting out to be homeschooled?
Very few, I would say a handful.
I've had none.
All right, thank you very much, and best of luck.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your supports. Night, everyone.
Yeah, appreciate your support, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Night.
Night.
That'll be Article 8. If there's nothing else, entertaining motion to accept Article 8 is written.
Make a motion to accept Article 8, Regional School Assessment Article.
For who's the Valley Regional?
For who's the Valley District.
Okay, and second, if I recall, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Joe.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous for Article 8. That brings us to Article 12, which was held by Member Novak.
Yeah, I just had a few concerns about the way this is being rolled out. I feel that it's really circumventing established procedure that's been, you know, used. And I was wondering, would this require a bylaw change? To, you know, just take some money and, you know, like a reserve fund? I don't understand to be known as the reserve fund account. Don't we have a reserve fund? Right, okay, but so, I'm just not comfortable with, you know, circumventing and leaving out, you know, what we've done for always in our bylaws. So, I'm asking, would this require a bylaw change?
This is the standard for current article, so that's Article 12.
Article 12. And if you're able to chime in. Member Novak is questioning Article 12. The county administrator stated that this is the standard language that has been used to establish the reserve fund each year.
It is. It's something that is done yearly and it's been done as long as I can remember.
Okay, and this is the language that has been used each year?
Yes.
Any further questions, Joe?
Well, why then would eliminate the expense to calling a special town meeting? Why is that put in there then if this is an established way of doing it? Why then did we need to call a special town meeting?
Would you like to address that?
Well, it's not an article that I created. I'd have to defer to whoever wrote that article as to why that was put in there.
Okay, well, it seems like it's contradicting what is written here. If the expense of calling a special town meeting, that's telling me that we would have to call a special town meeting. That was my aunt asking.
Yeah, without this provision, you would have to, like, when we go over and our sin's all in the winter.
But that is, that, I've known that we had, were able to do that. That's special.
Right, but if we didn't have this provision here, we would have to call a special town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to also chime in with that too, because that oftentimes comes up when, you know, certain budgets run low because as Rick said, you know, you're dealing with snow and snow removal salt accounts that that happen rather than have to call a special town meeting in order to affect a transfer of funds.
And then my last question, then, in that context, the reserve fund to transfer it, transfer it. Now, this is making a transfer already for $175,000, which is a good amount of change. And so, that leaves that money in what is called flexible to pay for anything that we need at the time?
A little funny example I can give you is when, in 2019, this roof project randomly published and community development director went to the finance committee and asked for additional funds from the reserve fund. The finance committee approved it, then it came to the board of selectmen to approve it, and the funds were transferred into that project from 175. The latest one in the spring was the pumper truck for forest wardens. We did $10,000 on that. So, there's a level of review from the finance committee and then the board of selectmen.
Yes, because that is what I'm wondering about. We're putting $175,000 out there and we don't know where we're going to spend it. Where you just brought an instance of why we needed extra money. And Rick also with snow and ice removal and salt. But this is kind of opening up the purse without having what we're going to spend it on, is what I'm getting at.
And that's the intent of the articles for emergency. That's how Mary has explained it to me. She's used it periodically before. This year, I made sure that we, when we had the pumper issue, I put Chief Kleiner through the wringer to make sure that when he looked at that truck, we did so in a effective manner. That $165,000 now goes into the stabilization account. And that's how it's been set up long before I got here. So, there's review on it, and I think my philosophy is, I don't know how the board feels, but, you know, that's unforeseen purposes or anything that comes up that's an emergency, again, like this roof. And Mary and I did have the conversation about, should we reduce that amount this year? Mary said in the past, the town has used all 175 for extreme emergencies. So, she cautioned against it and wanted to leave that amount. We did look at it, but secondism, Joe, is the same to my taste.
Any other questions? Article 12. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to accept Article 12 is written.
I make a motion to accept Article 12.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Bush, who has a second. Member Blanchard, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. That brings us to Article 18, that was held by Members DeWolff to ask a question about Adams Memorial.
So, through the chair, to the panel of commissioners, what's the heating system and the possible eventual use, public use of that building?
The project has completed. It's my understanding that a walk-through has not yet been completed, so the town has not signed off on the work yet. We have not accepted the work, but the work is completed. That's the rooftop units, known as RTUs, that were installed on the building to condition gymnasium, lobby space, and select office space. And I believe the old machine room classrooms and machine tech classrooms are also conditioned.
So, I assume that the board of selectmen, subcommittee on the middle school will be discussing the eventual use, public use of that building. And do you think that's, do you have any idea when that may be occurring? I'm just curious.
With the transition of the community development director, I would say that that's something that the subcommittee wants to have. They can have it once the building, the walk-through is completed and the building is for public activation.
The questions that we received are, when the fall begins, well, with the pandemic, it's, you know, we used to have basketball and the BART school used the gym. And so, there was, we were hoping that the adult leagues would come back and you also have the concern aging moving in and gym use. So, but with the pandemic, it kind of squashes that bit anyway, so, okay.
I would recommend that once the project is released and ready to go, the subcommittee walk through the building.
Thank you.
Can take a look at it. That's what I would forward to the board.
Thank you.
Yep, as I was going to say, we can have meetings before that though, because we were talking setting rules of use for the building. That, it doesn't have to be old for us to have, for us. Agreed.
John's point, I think as soon as that building becomes available, we can hide, you know.
Quick question. There hasn't been a walk-through yet with the finished work by the work that was done. They've been gone for quite some time.
That's what Donna told me last week.
Okay. Yeah, because they've abandoned their work. They've been out of there for at least over a month or better, I would think. So, I was stopping in to see how they were doing, what they were doing.
There's been some, there was a hole for a while. The first was the gas to get back to the building to initiate gas service to the building. Water service had been shut down. When the water service was reactivated, a couple of pipes broke. They had to get back. And so, there's been some smaller work in there.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve Article 18, Ms. Blight.
I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second? Second by Member DeWolff. Any further discussion on Article 18? Hearing none, roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. Article 20 was held by Member DeWolff. This is to create a new section, 125-40, Smart Growth Overleg District.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, under Section C, Establishment and Location, there's been four sub-districts identified. As the board have seen the maps of these areas, I believe, there are going to be plenty more discussions for approval. It probably says that. The question I have relates to Article 16-F, Affordable Housing. Now, this board in the past has agreed that affordable housing, you know, we want it for the town to move forward, that there's a mix. There's affordable housing, there's the medium level, then some high-level type income when apartments are, housing is developed in the past up to now. A lot of people, last time around, and, you know, it's affordable housing, it's all, you know, it's all, could be all affordable housing. And Paragraph F, in regards to affordable housing, for all projects, not less than 20% of housing units constructed shall be affordable housing. And subject to the foregoing, not more than 40% of housing units approved in the district as a whole under this section shall be affordable housing. So, there is a percentage identified for these housing units between 20 and 40%. Who makes that decision or is that, if you don't, who makes that decision? Is it, or is it based on a formula the state has?
If you go back, John, to the definition sections, you'll see on page 13, three up from the bottom, PAA, Plan Approval Authority. That definition reads, "The Adams Planning Board authorized under subsection J to conduct the plan approval process for purposes of reviewing project applications and issuing plan approval decisions within the Smart Growth District." So, the way that I understand how this would work is a developer will come in and say, "This is what I want to do." I have a maximum of 50 units, 20 units, 100 units, whatever that number may be. For each unit that is affordable under this provision, there's financing available at the state level for the developer. So, the developer is going to want to have a higher number of affordable units in there. For mixed-use development, you have to find a sweet spot that makes sense for the nature of the community in terms of what we want for a type of development, but also for the developer. If the number doesn't make sense, developer's not going to build. So, the planning board has that level of conversation. In the section that you read, if you also noticed, there's also language in there that allows the PAA. If you go a little further, it says, "The PAA may allow a greater percentage of affordable housing at its discretion for purposes of calculating the number of units of affordable housing required within a project. Any fractional unit shall be deemed to constitute a whole unit. Affordable housing shall be subject to the following requirements." So, you see, there's actually a lot of flexibility in there granted to the planning board to tailor the project. And again, this is an incentive project, an incentive policy that's designed to allow a developer to access those funds at the state level. And it's that number of affordable units that's built into the project that kind of triggers that. So, each unit is going to be its own review. There will never be two 40R housing projects built in Adams Development, built in Adams that will look the same.
The second question I had was in regards to the amount of money that the town may receive if this bylaw is approved, well, it's like a bylaw section, if the Smart Growth Amendment is approved. And it could be up to $600,000, as you mentioned earlier. But that's also tied, I believe I've read, to, and also, you know, it's tied to that the town comes through with the affordable housing units being built. You know, it could be office buildings also, it could be smart growth, could be many different types of buildings, construction and use. Many communities in the Commonwealth have not met those, their unique expectations in regards to the funding that they receive from the state and the law, or the, yeah, the law, I'll call it, in the case that the money needs to be returned if that is the case. Now, none of the communities in the state that have not met their requirements did they have to repay the state. So, that needs to be, do we, is that consideration as the town meeting members prepare for the town meeting, that, you know, is there a concern by the town that we do receive, let's say, 600K, as mentioned before, and we do not meet those, that threshold that the state requires? You know, again, other communities did not have to pay this back up to today, but that is also a possibility. So, is there any concern by yourself or the Community Development Office that that may be an issue?
We had a recent conversation about it, but it came up last year. I would just say, as we always are, let's be conservative in terms of how we would spend that money. And let's hope that by the time its town meeting path is to bylaw and by the time the state were to issue that incentive check, perhaps it's possible we have a project on the books. I don't think that's going to be an issue. We already know that there's at least one project that will only go forward. that will only go forward if forty R is passed. And we know that Memorial School, when we had the bid project, at least three out of those five or six developers that walked around and said, "If the town passes forty R, this project makes a lot more sense for us." So I would be optimistic about it, but I would also be conservative in saying, as soon as that check is banked, let's not, let's not run out of foreign spending.
Okay, thank you. But you know, it's just been a long time since we've.
Yeah, I've had to refresh my recollection on all this. And Community Development Director Season would be here, but unfortunately she's on vacation right now, so.
Anything else on Article twenty? Chair, you now will entertain a motion.
Motion of board to approve Article twenty.
Right, and the motion by member Blanchard. Do I have a second? Second by member DePaul. Any further discussion? Chair, you now will call vote Joe.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It's a yes from fifteen, so that is unanimous.
The point of order is, we're just, you know, we're just, kind of, we're just screwing it up. Stop being, I just hold on.
Article twenty-four was held by member Novak.
Yeah, let me see.
On the economic development line.
Okay, yep. The reason I held that is I know that we had a job description for a senior planner, but we're also, at least the way I look at it, we're looking for someone as a economic community development consultant. Now, what does that encompass? And is there any job description of what that person will be doing?
No, there's no job description for it. It's a consultant position, but we would anticipate that those funds would be utilized to pay community, the former Community Development Director, Donna Season, to remain on-town staff as a consultant at an hourly rate in order to continue to consult on certain projects that she's seen through as a very particular and specific that frankly would be advantageous to the town to retain. So that's what we would use those funds for.
Well, then I'm all for that.
I figured you would be.
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't made clear to me on that, and she's worth her weight in gold.
Anything else on Article twenty-four?
And, you know, Joe, don't quote me on this either, but I'm pretty sure that there's been, I'm almost positive I had a conversation with Mary, that we've allocated funds out of this for similar, you know, purposes. So the structure hasn't.
I didn't change. Was it made clear in the, as I read it?
Chair, you nothing else? Do you have a motion? Who are the four? Any further discussion? Chair, you now will call vote Joe.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a yes from fifteen. That is unanimous. That brings us to Article twenty-six, which was held by member DePaul.
This is my last one.
It is, yeah. Maybe that's the last one I would have.
If we are on Article twenty-six, I'm sure, I don't assume, it's the mobile station next to the Plunkett.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Housie Valley Elementary Plunkett Building School. So, just a couple of questions. Just, you know, I know Joe, in the past, has been in favor. You know, a few years ago, we had opportunity to get that land, and he was pushing for that. The question I have is, and I mentioned, I think I might have mentioned this, in regards to the, when we, the Plunkett project was done back in the early nineties, I believe. The school, when digging in that area, and again, this is my memory, that there was a large amount of oil discovered in that area where that building was going to be constructed, the addition to the Plunkett School. And, you know, again, from memory, I believe that hindered the appropriation of, the funding that was appropriated for the boiler system or the shingle, or the roofing of the gymnasium, which we have talked about many times over the years. Those projects were not able to move forward, those two, maybe others, maybe one of the two, because of the amount of money that the building committee had to appropriate to clean up the oil spill that was there. Now, back to the mobile station. The only concern I have is that I don't remember how the building committee, the school building committee at the time, fixed the oil issues. I know it came from up south on Commercial Street, from another building. And so that would, you know, mean to me that under the mobile station, there may be a, another situation of oil. And so that is, that is a concern, but if you, you know, if you just use it as a parking lot, for example, which I think many would like, many would like to see, then, then, and you also have federal grants that can be cleaned up if needed, that land can be cleaned up if there is oil found there. Have the tanks been removed?
We believe the tanks are pumped, but still present.
Still present. So just the question to the town administrator, to the chair. So with the oil situation, I don't know if I can go back and ask someone, and I just haven't had the time to do that, but I could do it, of the old building committee, of what the solution was. You know, did it take care of the whole area of the oil situation, or is it still there? Or does it even matter to us? If it is acquired by the town, if it's just a paid parking lot, it doesn't really matter. And then with the two tanks that are in the ground, do they need to be removed if the property changes hands to the town?
So at our next meeting, we will have Community Development Director Season come in and give you an update. Because prior to our willingness to move forward with the property transaction, we wanted an answer essentially to those questions. So using pre-existing funds that we have for this type of work, the Community Development Department engaged TRC, an environmental consulting firm that we've used before, and has been reviewing all of the history with that site, and has also been out there and done some work. So we have a pretty good snapshot at what a future cleanup would look like, what a cost would look like. And we would know that by owning that property, we have now access. If we don't own it, we can't have access to it. That's one of the keys, is if the public owns that property, we would have access to brownfields, cleanup funds, et cetera. So Donna has that information. I'm not at that, that level. She has it. I know TRC's been out there. But she can give us a pretty good, TRC can give us a pretty good snapshot at what we think it's going to be. They, to my knowledge, have not found anything that's substantial yet. But let her give you the actual report.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question I have, and first, Joe, I speak in the background because he was a little ahead of us. I'm sure she was at the time. That's the board at the time. The final question is, the select board usually is not in the business of acquiring real estate. It does mention that if the town meeting does give the select, the authority, that the select board could purchase that land. Where would that funding?
So the town did not put out any funds in order to purchase this property. The fiscal transaction is essentially a release of three liens that are on the, another parcel owned by the same owner. So the transaction is essentially a release of two tax liens, a demolition lien, and in return, that property is deeded to the town free and clear of any encumbrances or anything along those lines. And that parcel, Twenty-sixth Commercial Street, is current on its taxes.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'd like to elaborate on that, since my name was mentioned on that. We could have had that parcel for free. I had made arrangements, and no one wanted to bite on it. And, you know, John's, he never brought that up during the course of the discussion about the building, because he was on the building committee that put the addition on. And that never came out in the conversation. And, you know, I don't know why it didn't. But I can tell you about brownfields is that if you're just going to make a parking lot, and the only time it would, it would certainly need addressing, and the only time you'd have to go full hog is if you're going to put drainage within that area when you have to dig down and pipe it there. So if work was to be done there and all the water could be ushered out to the road and graded in that direction, that would forego a lot of what the concern seems to be. And just today, when I rode by, there was five cars parked there, letting their children out. Teachers don't have all that much parking. A lot of them have been parked there. And it's an eyesore. And certainly, you know, if it gets in the wrong hands of someone else and they don't do anything to upgrade it, "We're going to have a nice new town common. We're going to have a nice new highway. McDonald's is going to be over, redoing their building facade." And then we got the mobile station. So in my opinion, if we want people coming to our community, and that's how we've been our calling card, is to make sure that as people come into our community, and I know, John, you've said that many times, that it looks presentable. And that's certainly an eyesore. And once again, you know, I know Donna had money in brownfields account. I don't know if she still does. We might have expended it at the Housie Valley Coal and Grain Site, because there was remedial work done there. But, you know, it's just discouraging to me that what we could have had for nothing is now a good a cost. But as our town administrator said, and I won't mention names, there's so much money out on over, taxes not paid on these other parcels, that we're never going to get that money anyways, regardless of, you know, go to court or whatever, because it just won't be paid. So in short, I, you know, I'm going to push forward at the town meeting, and I just think that it needs to be put into town hands, since we own the school. And it's just an advantageous lot for people dropping their kids off for school. And because, you know, having worked there, it certainly feeds quite a bit. So that's all I've got to say. So, thank you.
Just one clarification. I wasn't on the Plunkett Building Committee. That was looking before my time.
Okay.
I just, I.
I'm sorry then, but how did you know about it?
By just memory of the news articles. Just memory.
Well, I used to read them. I never remembered him saying that. I didn't know there was article about it. Okay, that's all right. I don't want to be confrontational, but no, that's okay.
In confrontational, it's a document discussing with us the next meeting.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you. So that's Article twenty-six. So if there's a motion?
I'll make a motion on Article twenty-six, truly, land acquisition.
Okay. I have a motion by member Novak.
Second?
Second by member DePaul. Any further discussion? Chair, you now will call vote Joe.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a yes from fifteen, so that is unanimous. That is all the articles that were forward in town meeting. So the next step in this process is that these articles will go forward to the Finance Committee and they're meeting tomorrow, September third. They are meeting at five PM. It is a committee meeting. It's closed to the public, but the Finance Committee members will be calling in to review these and providing their recommendations. This will hopefully keep us in line with our chat line, taking materials out to town meeting members in a timely fashion to move forward with debate of our next meeting, which is Thursday, September twenty-four, six PM at Bull Field. I will just let the board know that we had a crew over at Bull Field today in the rain. So we got to see what the field conditions might be like on a rainy day. We had town moderator, town clerk, police chief, voting foreman, ECW director, town administrator, police staff. We had a member of the AICF committee as well as represented from a tent company and an audiovisual company to make sure that we would have meetings and cover our town. Lighting, because it is six PM meeting. It will get dark about four to seven on that day. We talked about available restrooms, ADA access, parking, arrival, forest warding. Police department will help with guiding people to parking and to their seats. The facilities have gone out from town clerk's office, community members. It also states that all members can be wearing their mask and standards and so forth. So logistics are still ongoing. I will also mention that once everything is finalized for warrant, it will be on the town's website, as well as going to the printer. There are some articles in the warrants that, in particular, the zoning articles, the Smart Growth as well, that is Article twenty and twenty-one. There will be some maps that will be on the town's website to make sure that town meeting members have that information as well. So they'll all be in one. Did I miss any logistical things that we talked about?
We'll have to clean up whenever you left the line.
Of logistics, and I'm just trying to.
As I was quoted in the paper saying, "We'll try to make this as logistically uncomplicated as possible." And we had a, we had a fairly good meeting. I'd like to thank everyone that participated, and we'll make sure that we have a decent town meeting.
And I know that I've spoken with the town warriors, town clerk, and town administrator about holding a workshop prior to meeting, town meeting members, as we have done in the past, so that people can go through the articles, ask any questions, get any more information that they need prior to going to town meeting.
I met a few town meeting members when I was visiting the polling location yesterday, and they're actually quite excited about having it at that location, having it outside.
That's everything under new business. So we'll go on to the car report. And Madam Administrator, sure.
Thank you. So this is the summer of construction, and our next big, very large reconstruction project is scheduled to begin. That would be the Commercial Street area of Route Eight, the southerly entrance corridor into our lovely town. You'll see the signage boards are up, indicating that work is due to begin September fourteenth. That's going to be some level of work, but we don't think it's going to be too invasive. So I reached out to the resident engineer at MassDOT and the project manager for the contractor, J. H. Maximilian. We'll be starting a communications chain, and we'll do our best to get any traffic, any traffic restrictions out, should they occur through the course of the project. So that's why those signs are up. Good news is a landmark on Park Street has transferred ownership, the Miss Adams Diner has transferred ownership to a new owner. That would be Mr. Pete Oleskowitz from North Adams, Desperado's fame in North Adams. Pete is hoping to open up sometime in October. We've met with him in terms of code enforcement and other issues. So we've been already speaking with him, so we're happy to welcome him at some point. I'm sure we'll have him come to the board and introduce himself. And then lastly, our tourist railroad, the Berkshire Scenic Railroad Museum, will be resuming tourist trains' operation this weekend, every day weekend. I believe it's only going to be two trains a day, I think at one o'clock and three thirty. And this is also the year that the railroad museum will be operating two of its vintage passenger cars, traditional passenger cars, hauled by a traditional diesel electric locomotive, and giving the single BUDRDC a break for a period of time. So they will also be utilizing the renovated Adams Station, the restrooms that have been constructed in there this year, and then eventually down the road, finish that building and use it for a gift shop and ticket sale. So we're excited to have that operation back. Hopefully, they'll be able to operate that all the way through the end of October without any, any further issues with the pandemic. I know that several people have already told me that there's been a lot of buzz and interest with people looking to buy tickets already. I think folks are looking to do something. So that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions under county man care?
Just comments. That's some good news. I'm glad to see that trains hit the up running. I think that's been a godsend to this community. And all the money that we put in on the, you know, for the station. And it brings people from out of town, and that's no doubt. And also, it's nice to see that another business is coming into downtown. I know that was in negotiations for quite a while, and I'm glad that it finalized. And I noticed too, down on Summer Street, that donut places could open. And I just knew it because I saw the sign. I didn't hear it from any town official. Because I had to, you know, I just happened to see the sign going up. And I talked to the guy. He's going to make special donut orders and he's going to do them from scratch. So those are kind of things that I wish, you know, when you hear those things, that you could bring them forward to us. And I also heard through the grapevine, and I went down, that we had a pretty major sewer breakdown near Winter Street.
A second one. There was one last year and there was one this year.
Okay, yeah. Has that been taken care of?
Taken care of. The source of the problem is actually on private property. So the property owners are under Health Department order to repair it.
Yeah, that's up on Lays Lane, that green house, I believe.
Yes. If it's not repaired, DPW is prepared to go in there at public cost. And then will have to be reimbursed after the fact. Mark Blaisdell supervising that.
Being the culprit, me, D. P., not getting a permit, you know, if sewer, if sewer gets in the river, we could be in trouble, you know? And I don't know if it's bleaching down and getting, okay, that's fine because the barrier is pretty good with the concrete.
We had an issue last year where it began to leak. And the assessment was made that it was not a public function. Because of its proximity to the river, myself and Tim Coder, the operations supervisor, we had no DPW director, made the decision, we need to, we need to do it. So we did it. And we expressed to the landowners at the time that that was a courtesy fix due to the public safety nature. Here we are again, a year later, it broke again. We took some remedial action to prevent that. However, it's now time that it be repaired.
That's fine. And then my final question on that, is that something our highway department can do? Or we could have to subcontract that out?
No, that's, the guys can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as I know.
Yes. Well, that's some good news about the businesses.
It is. And, and to your point, Joe, is, you know, some of the businesses, like the donut shop, did not get on my radar. If they don't call Deb to set up an appointment or if they don't reach out to me, if folks are savvy enough to understand the business opening model, they'll call the building inspector immediately. If there's no zoning permits or anything that, like the board of selectmen need to review, the wheels start happening. That one was new to me a few weeks ago. But Miss Adams, Mr. Oleskowitz reached out directly to me. So I bring them forward as I can. And I can also tell you that none of these are ready to be announced publicly. But we have all of a sudden a little bit of interest in Adams. So there's even others that are reaching out, looking at financing, they're assessing themselves that they want to do it. And I encourage anyone out there just to please call my office, call Deb. If I'm not available, get an appointment, let us know what you'd like to do, and we'll work with you through it. We try to get all the, nature of the business, we try to get all the code enforcement folks together, fire, building, zoning, code enforcement, health, sanitary, meet all together. That way their business owner actually knows what is going to be expected by the regulatory authority upfront. And that helps them make an informed decision. And I think maybe that word's finally getting out, but that's how we're working here in Adams.
Yeah, it's an idyllic town. The setting is just beautiful. I mean, it's New England, DS can be. It's just, I didn't think of flower ready to blossom. We just got to, you know, find a way of getting people interested. And right now, maybe after COVID, people are going to feel more confident in what they're doing, but that's good news.
Our real estate is, for lack of a better term, hot right now.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Any questions?
No.
Will we have a town council report?
Okay, since my last report on August nineteenth, I worked on the following matters. I responded to a request for advice from the Board of Health. I prepared and filed a petition for further appellate review of an appeals court decision. I responded to a question from the Town Assessor. I met with staff concerning various legal issues. I provided advice to the Board of Health regarding its August nineteen meeting. And I provided advice concerning the town meeting warrant. You're welcome.
Thanks to Subcommittee and liaison reports. I will start with John.
We have a meeting of the V R E C Selectment Committee tomorrow afternoon. How, a question to Rick and the town administrator, the Public Safety Committee. Are we meeting in the near future? Is that, is that, I thought we planned to do that. Was any reason to?
I don't think we had a question right now.
What I'd like to, I'd like to request that we put together a Public Safety Subcommittee in the near future. We did meet with the chief, Chief of Police, and discussed several areas when he first started his position. And like to get a, another discussion in those areas, how things are going. So he was chief, used to, on several occasions, give status to the board of selectmen when he had things to discuss. And I would like to request that Chief Bacon be given the opportunity to do the same thing when he has news for the community, good, bad, whatever, that he gives, that he gets engaged with the board of selectmen. Because I think Chief Tarso, that was, that was a good opportunity for everyone to, for us to ask our questions and for the community to get understanding what's happening out there. As long as Chief Bacon is okay with that, of course.
Absolutely.
Why you have to ever need it? Okay. Anything else under Subcommittee and Liaison Report?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Yep. Jim was feeling under the weather, so he called me if I could fill in for him. And I was glad to do so at Park's Commission Meeting. It was held at Bowfield. And the gist of it was all having to do with, you know, Mark was there, Robert Tober was there. And the talk centered on all the things that you needed to do for contact sports, all the protocol that the governor had stated. And it almost came to the realization to me, I didn't comment that, you know, it's not a sport if you can't play it properly. I mean, if you're playing football and you, you know, you can't do what it is to, you know, be a football player or lacrosse, I don't see the, the reason for even going any farther with things that, you know, I know kids need the activity. But in short, the gist of it was having to do with COVID nineteen and all the parameters that needed to be met in order to continue with sports programs. So that's basically all I have for Subcommittee.
Jim, anything under Subcommittee and Liaison Report?
I have nothing.
Okay. We'll go to announcements. It's going to be ordered. The camera's still on you, Joe, so I'll let you go first.
Yeah, well, I have some overarching issues. I've been asking, you know, to get Jay's review set up. And I've been told numerous times, yeah, we're going to do it. It's only fair to Jay. He's been here a year and a half, and he hasn't been reviewed yet. Okay? And also, I brought up about, you know, having a frank discussion about overtime issues. It's really costing, you know, the community a lot. I know overtime needs to be parsed out, but, you know, I think those are issues that, they're not glamorous, they're not popular, but they're important. And you had written it down, I remember you writing it down, Christine, that we'll discuss it in an upcoming meeting. And that was nearly a month ago.
Actually, I believe that my response to you was that this has been discussed in budget meetings. What you were asking for was a five-year report on overtime costs. And you wanted to bring in the new directors of those departments to ask them about overtime. And as I mentioned to you at that time, you brought in two new directors. So we have our interim Chief of Police and our Director of DPW, who has been charged with maintaining that overtime budget line. And that this is an appropriate conversation for the next budget session. But this is something that was brought up at last week's meeting of the Board of Selectmen. You asked for the overtime costs that Town Council gave provided to you and answered any questions. And she did that again to the Finance Committee as well.
Okay, well, I wish.
So even the last month, you have been, you asked, and it has been answered.
Well, I wish that I kind of got that recap from you a little earlier because the thing is, if that was the case, I would have brought in the overtime and read it to the public to see how much money is being spent, overtime. And so you're saying now to me, when I'm asking you if we could have a frank discussion, then I'd like you to bring in Robert and have the chief and at least tell me and the public what their plans are to try to arrest how much overtime that they're, that we're paying out. Because, you know, when Chief Tarso was here, he promised, hire, you know, if you hire Lieutenant Briggs, we're going to save money because we'll have full staff. And, you know, when it came down, he admitted, he says, no, we didn't have any savings. But, you know, and, and sometimes on this board, it feels like my presence is irrelevant. That's the way I personally feel, and I'll stop there. And I was wondering, I liked what Kim Woodack used to give to us for a recap of what she did. And at one meeting, I was told that they were going to update the sheet so it'd be more professional. I really enjoyed getting those. I don't need something professional. But that was nice to get to see what Kim is doing. And she's doing a good job because she gave me a ticket for Park. And I thanked her for it because I was in the wrong. So I would, I don't know, is she going to continue to give them to us? Because we haven't had one now, and they were coming.
We, we need to speak with the chief. She was sending them to me directly because she had no immediate direct supervision. So now that Chief Bacon's, we've realigned that to make sure she can.
Because I, you know, Jay, I just kind of like those because it shows me she's on the ball. And now some good things. I'd like to thank Haley and all the poll workers. I stood out from holding a sign for a politician, I won't say the name, from the beginning of voting to the very end. And it was very nice. You can't see when you're on Summer Street because a lot of people come from the back. But there was a steady crowd of people. And Haley and her staff, it's a well-oiled machine. They do a great job. And I wanted to thank her, but she had left. And, but one thing I did notice, and I think we have to do something, is it's very unsafe voting there. People have to park and cross the street. And those cones in the middle of the road are more of a hindrance than a help because it narrows, you know, the roadside. And, you know, people are opening their doors. And people got to stop quick because if they don't, they're going to take somebody's door off. So I'd like to see us work on getting voting at Memorial School. The parking isn't much better. Perhaps it's not even as good, but at least it's off the main thoroughfare. And we had it there before. It seemed to work pretty good. It's a large space and it doesn't require the town department having to take out all their equipment. So, you know, it, I would like to see that. And I also wrote it down, I think Christine may have mentioned of it. I'm glad that the chief comes to our meetings. That shows me that he's interested, interested. And I think it's expediting his learning curve to get a better feel of what Adams is all about. So thank you, chief, for stopping by. It's like coming to a comedy show sometime, and I want to be the star.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. And that's all I have.
All set. Thank you.
Jim, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay, I have two announcements. It seems like it's Chief Bacon's night. But Chief Bacon has signed himself up and members of the Police Department and maybe some other town officials. I think you're still working on some of them.
Some people are holding.
There's no holding out. Do you participate? Participate in Elizabeth Freeman Center's annual Walk a Mile event this year. It is being held virtually. It is my understanding that Chief Bacon will be leading the team on September sixteenth at twelve noon. I believe that all are invited to participate for help with the donations that the department is seeking. And it's been twelve years or sixteen years that.
I'm sure twelve.
Twelve years since the department has participated. So I thank the chief for getting involved with the community organization.
Are we going to shop there? Do you get a lot of shoes?
I've heard about Nike here on Amazon, so.
This has like a really great conversation that you've had offline about your shoe selection, which is wonderful. I also know that the chief is working on National Night Out with the department as well. What is the date of that event? October?
It'll be October six.
Six, okay. So I just wanted to make sure that that's on everybody's radar as well. And then thank you again for being that charged.
And I might, we're also working in.
You don't know the mic is on now.
Yeah, sorry. We're also working in cooperation with the council nation to have a coffee with the cops event on the seventh of October. So once we get everything nailed down, clarified, get all entered and checked out, I'll let all of you know if you want to come and join us.
Thank you. And then I just have a couple of, thank you. I wanted to thank Williams College and Mass MoCA for scrambling last week and helping us to participate in the national movement last Wednesday on the twenty-sixth to recognize the one hundredth anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment being part of the Constitution. Williams College and Mass MoCA provided us with the genitals necessary for us to light town hall in purple and gold in recognition of that anniversary. The suffragette coverage was displayed on the building for one night. We made it onto the National Registry of all the buildings that were lit across the country for the anniversary. So thank you to our, our friends at Williams and Mass MoCA for that. If there's nothing else to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn?
By member Novak.
Of course.
Member Blanter. Did they both call a vote now?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It's a yes from Christine. Just so everyone is aware, I am not looking to schedule a meeting next Wednesday. I don't think that's really going to form at this time. So our next meeting would be September sixteenth at seven P M. And that is it. Thank you very much.